Commissioner Ms. Llaimondo?
Here.
Commissioner Alonso Tadomates?
Here.
Commissioner Pulis Acalamantes? Commissioner Vali Rubatella?
We do have three present and we do have a quorum. 1.3 Pledge of Allegiance Salute the Texas Flag.
1.4 Testimony Oath of Prisoners.
Please be advised if you are here to do a presentation that you are under oath before Commissioners' Court. 1.5 Public Comments.
You know if you want to wait this item 2.1 or you want me to do it now?
If you want to do a public comment, you have your 30 minutes with your court's office for 2.1.
Just grab it. Get a chance to talk.
Go ahead.
On that 2.1, I am not in favor of it at this time. The county has not done any feasibility studies as to whether or not we can afford a district attorney and a staff and a staff. We don't have the office space to house a district attorney at this time. When the Petri building first became available, I told Mr. Breda that would be the perfect place for a district judge or a district attorney. And that became a fight between county officials as to who was going to go in there first. And then he's also the auditor. And when I talked to him on Friday of Solana County, there's been no feasibility study in Solana County or Dimmitt County, how are we going to afford to pay for a district attorney at this time? And if we do approve a resolution and it does pass, what guarantee do we have? We're not going to be in the same boat we are now where our felony cases, non-operation All-Star cases are being indicted. There's no guarantee. The other problem we're now seeing in our courts is that we don't have enough attorneys in our small towns to even take court-appointed cases. In our county court cases, we have one attorney only that's taken. And he's asked for more money already. So who is going to be our district attorney? Anybody can run this licensed attorney, but the number of prospects available in Dimmitt and Solana are very limited. You know, Solana, there's probably no one under the age of 60 that's licensed attorney in Solana County. I'm over the age of 60 and there's a few here that are, you know, 35, 40 years old. But then you have two senior attorneys and we also have to have the legalists that decide this Solana County, so he's available also as a district attorney to choose. But we don't have a lot of options. But until we know that we can afford it financially, you know, I can advise this Commissioners' Court or recommend it to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other public comments, Ms. McDannan? 2.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Approve Joint Resolution Requesting the Continuation of the 293th Judicial District Servant Dimmitt and Solana Counties. Commissioners, as you, I don't know, do you have it before you? I think it was, is it attached to your?
Yes.
Okay. Attached to your agenda is an email sent by Mr. Morales's office and Mr. Representative, Mr. Leach, in regards to a ominous court bill that was filed by Mr. Morales, in Jan, excuse me, in February of 25, 2025. Mr. Morales advised me of a bill that he was intending to submit in whereas the Dimmitt County and Solana Counties would potentially be split in jurisdiction for the district attorney's office only and Maverick County would have their own office, which would become the 365th District Attorney's Office in Maverick County. I advised him that at that point, I wanted some more information on it. I did tell him that based on my belief and the information I had, that I would support the bill and that I needed more information. And that I would need some, we're on 2.1, Commissioner.
Okay.
That we would need more information regarding this bill. He did send me a bill that he had previously filed back in 2021. He did not advise me that he had filed the bill. I found out actually through Mr. Robert Sedna that the bill had been filed and that it would take place or take an effect, excuse me, September 1st of 2025. However, in speaking to Mr. Sedna and speaking to Mr. Morales, my distinct understanding, and I saw Mr. Gonzalez's email that he forwarded to us, they were trying to fix the language, that this bill would not take effect until January 1st of 2029 instead of September 1st of 2025. So essentially, this resolution in layman's terms is pretty much like a letter of support to Mr. Morales's bill. At the end of the day, obviously, Austin and the legislation in Austin would decide whether or not they would vote to split the districts. Our resolution would be essentially a letter of support. I have reached out to the county judge in Maverick County to see his position. And their position is that they do want the districts to be split. It appears to me that Maverick wants to have their own district attorney. I know that at the time Judge Cindy Rivera was also in support of it. However, as you all are aware, she did pass away. I know that in speaking to the sheriff in Solana County, their concern is in terms of being able to afford it if Dimmitt and Solana could work together to afford separating the districts. And so that is why I put this on a special meeting because Mr. Morales's office advised me that they needed the resolution by Friday, April the 4th.
I know I am just one vote, but I am against it. I know that at the time, right now, we can afford it. But my colleagues in Crystal City, Dimmitt, Solana County cannot afford it. I spoke to the sheriff and I spoke into another commissioner and they cannot afford it. I mean, that's just me. I'm against it.
And just really quick, Commissioner Nubukawa, I know that this bill, I know you say you're against it because Solana County cannot afford it, but this bill, just to refresh your recollection, back in April of 2021, Judge Ponce, Francisco Ponce, at the time, had submitted this exact same bill to this Commissioners' Court to create the new district attorney's office. And at that time, you actually, Commissioner Nubukawa, motioned to approve and to support this bill.
Like you said, at the time, back in 2021, at this time, I do not support it.
And I'm just, I'm just curious to know what has changed from 2021, when you were supporting the bill, to now you're not supporting the bill?
That, like I stated, we can afford it. I know Solana can't and we work, do, do, with Solana. They're our partners, though. To me, I don't think we, I mean, I'm just, like I said, I'm just one vote.
No, I understand and I respect that.
But that's why I'm against it. Yes, we've always worked together and I think with communicating with the rest of the DA's office and the sheriff's office and trying to get cases going, I mean, we're lacking communication because there's no communication among us. So if we communicate better, maybe our cases can be heard and move forward. So right now, I know we can't, we can't afford it, but this oil field, this oil field business is not on the last level. By how we're going on spending and all that, I don't know. I'm just worried and scared that we're going to wind up like when we do. We've helped the city of Carrizo so much that at the end, we were left with the bills paying for them, in which, I mean, we have to help them out too, but we had to carry all that burden. And I'm afraid that's going to happen also if we do, we go with this, so that's why I'm saying no.
And I respect your opinion, Commissioner. I was just curious as to what had changed because you had motioned to approve it back in 2021. And just for the record, because I wasn't here in 2021, neither was Commissioner Tadomates, so I had to get myself acquainted with this bill because, like I mentioned, back in 2021, this bill was put on the table here for Dimmitt County to have that discussion by the previous Judge Francisco Ponce. And in doing some research and looking into it, just to put it out there, right now, Dimmitt County provides $215,000 is what we give Mr. Sedna's office. 215? No, we give 215,000.
It's 210.
Is it 210? Okay. We give 210,000, thank you, Commissioner. We give Mr. Sedna $210,000 right now. And Solana County also, is that?
I don't have a copy.
Solana County also gives him $210,000 for it.
Solana County gives?
From the documents you gave me, right, Ms. Hernandez?
That was a question that I had because this is Solana County's. My question that I had on it was, are we going to split it 50-50 with Solana County? Because obviously, we know that Dimmitt County is a little bit on better standing than Solana County is. So my question was from my financial standpoint, how much more? Because we're not just, and again, I know that it's just built to support.
It's a letter of support.
And the House is going to do what the House is going to do. But what scares me a little bit is the financial side of it. Because yes, we are good right now, so to speak, on it. But what happens if Solana can't pay? Then what happens to us? Because then we're, we're basically like, what this letter kind of says is like, we're going to support a home office. How much is it going to cost us to do that office? And if we are going to split it 50-50, because right now it's looking that Solana County gives a little bit less, would we have to pay more than Solana County because our population percentage is higher than them? Like, how would it split?
Actually, their population is higher than us.
Oh, okay. Like, how do they split?
Currently, I don't know how Solana, from what information Solana County gave us, was that they give Mr. Sedna $210,000. I don't know how they come up with that number, to be honest. Yeah, I don't know how they come up with that number. Obviously, there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of crinkles to iron out. Like I said, this was, I went back in, excuse me, February, I, you weren't here when I said it, but in February 25, 2025, I had gone to the Capitol with the organization I'm in and Mr. Morales had brought up that bill that back in 2021, he had conversations with Mr. Ponce about bringing it. And he had advised me that at that time, our Commissioners' Court was for it. And I said, oh, okay, well, that'll be great. You know, I'm for it too if they were for it. So we'll keep the conversation. And we've had some conversation on it. I think there is still a lot of crinkles to be ironed out in regards to the financial issue aspect of it and how it's going to be situated in terms of the logistics and whatnot. Like I said, at this time, it was to put it on the table for discussion and essentially to put it on the table for the resolution.
So from the reports, it does show that Solana County is paying the same amount that Dimmitt County is. So do you know how it's divided right now into the three counties?
So obviously Maverick is the biggest county, right? And Dimmitt County is second, or Solana actually by numbers is second, and we're the smallest county in terms of numbers. But historically speaking, and Mr. Ponce is here, he might know, historically speaking, I think Dimmitt has always given more than Solana County to the DA's office.
To answer your question, if we would go into the partnership, Solana?
Mr. Ponce, you can come to the front.
If, if the court considers that and it does pass, Solana County would be obliged to pay more because it's the division of the expenditures is based on population. So right now Maverick County pays like 65% and I think Crystal City, Solana, they pay like 18 and we pay like 12 something. The difference between us and them is not that much, but if that would be created, then they would have to pay a little bit more because it's based on population. Now, those issues have been thrown around for a while. The only ones that we did agree was, right before I came into, became an attorney, we divided from Laredo because we used to be part of Laredo. And then we created our own district chair, which was the 293rd. And they pushed to create the county judge's position, the 365th. And they created the 365th. Now, the spiel back then was, it's not going to cost that much money, blah, 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 all those days. But as you know, it costs a lot of money. So what Solana County can, can I do? I do not know. I know that we can afford it. I don't remember, I remember discussing it with Mr. Morales, but I don't remember discussing passing a resolution in support. I don't know what we did. I don't remember. It was during COVID, so I doubted very seriously that we would support the split. Now, the only thing that concerns me with what is proposed on the bill, they want to have their cake and eat it. They want to have a DA for the 365th. They want to have a DA for the 293rd, but a DA for the 365th can only practice in Maverick County, but the DA here can practice in Maverick County, Dimmitt County. So that would create legislatively a problem. Now, is there a need for two DAs? I don't know. It's up to the Commissioners' Court. I will never tell the Commissioners' Court how to cast the votes. The only concern that I have is that bill is unclear when I read it. And I think there's needs to be a lot more discussions about that, about this bill before a resolution is entered, not being spent.
Thank you, Mr. Ponce.
I have another question. So you're saying that right now that it would be, so our DA from, if we got a DA, that our DA from Dimmitt County and Solana would also be able to practice in Maverick County, but Maverick County's DA would only be able to practice in Maverick County?
No, that's not the way it reads.
That's what I understood. That's why I said that thing is unclear. I don't know.
The way that it reads is that the 293rd would serve Dimmitt and Solana only. That's the way that it reads.
So we wouldn't have to?
To go to Maverick County. No, because I think the whole purpose is, the way that I, oh, thank you. The way that I understand it is, obviously, I think they want their own district attorney. That's the way I understood it. You had something, Mr. Burdina?
If I may just?
Go ahead.
I think there's, this resolution or this proposal is kind of similar to pretty much anything else. It's got pros and cons to it. Fortunately, we really don't have much, very many facts to go by right now, except the fact that, the fact that like Mr. Gonzalez there already, it doesn't, it doesn't really assure us that our numbers are going to improve in any shape or form. However, I look at the long term of what this proposal might bring. And in fact, fact of the matter is, regardless of who pays what or how it's put together, depending on how this bill is proposed or presented, once it passes, it's pretty much left up to how Solana and Dimmitt County figure out how they're going to, how we're going to make it work. If the bill passes through, through Austin, we're going to have to figure out what, are we financially going to have to make it work regardless of, you know, who was for it or against it. But long-term wise, you know, we just went through our Commissioners' Court, we received a report from Ms. Madi. And we're looking at numbers and I'm not slitting this on anybody, like Commissioner Nubukawa said, you know, maybe our communication must needs to improve, but this is a pattern that we've been having. And my concern is to our constituents. When they come up and ask, hey, you know, I have a case that, you know, they broke into my house and it's been sent there for over a year, nothing's happened. You know, I feel like my, personally, if my house was broken into, I'd want something to be done about it as soon as possible. You know, and if we look at numbers, how much is it costing us at Dimmitt County to keep all these individuals either incarcerated or if we're paying for them to be there because of the lack of action or movement on whether it be the DA's office, in this case, it be the DA's office. Where last conversation we had, that was basically what they were, we were told that we're not getting any, what do we have, nine cases?
Nine cases.
So, so you know, going back to the fact that we don't have very many facts to go by, and I'm the one that I'd like to go and see facts so that we can make a logical and educated decision, so to speak. But unfortunately, we're going around in circles and this is only one, this is one option, one major option that may help us, may not help us, but unfortunately, like I said, if it passes, we'll be forced to deal with it and hopefully it'll benefit us. I kind of see it as a classroom. If you have a classroom of 40 kids and they split the classroom and now you're left with 20, you're, you may be more susceptible to pay more attention to 20 kids than trying to deal with 40. That's kind of the way I kind of see it. Maverick County is a huge county and it takes a lot of focus and time. I don't know that the manpower is there to be able to handle all three counties. The numbers don't show it. The only thing I would lean on if approved, and then like, this is just a letter of support, basically, like you stated, but that this, if this does go through, I just hope it takes action on January 1st, 2029, where it allows our current district attorney to finish his term. I don't think legally, I don't believe in some notion, Richard, that legally he could be just left with Maverick and Dimmitt and removed from, I mean, with Solana and Dimmitt and removed from Maverick, being that he just became elected not too long ago. Those are my concerns. That's pretty much my take on it. And hopefully, this ends up to our favor and benefit.
And you're right. I did, I, when I spoke to, I actually spoke to Mr. Sedna yesterday, our current DA, and he did advise me that he was in support of this bill. However, he would like for us or anybody in support of the bill to wait that it takes effect, like you said, January 1st of 2029. He, I did advise him that, you know, my concerns that I had was the lack of prosecution. And I did talk to him yesterday and I told him, you know, Mr. Sedna, we're not getting cases indicted in Dimmitt County. And I don't know if all the, all the effort is going, put to Maverick County, but all the cases here in Dimmitt County are not being prosecuted. And he understood that and of course, his, his concern obviously is OLS. But he told me that, you know, he would be in support of this bill so long as it took effect in 2029. But either way, I mean, I put it on the table for the discussion. I had told Mr. Gonzalez, I told Mr. Sedna, I told Mr. Morales. To me, either way, whatever the court wants to do, it doesn't matter to me. I, my main goal and my belief and my position in conjunction with yours, Commissioner Udanda, is our constituents and the way that our cases are not being indicted or that they're not, it's not being efficient. To be quite honest with you, I mean, obviously, this was put on the table, like I said, to this Commissioners' Court, April 26, 2021, at that time, to separate the district attorney's office. It was a motion that was put in by Commissioner Nubukawa, second by Commissioner Udanda, and it passed. I figured that that was something that this court, with the exception of Commissioner Tadomates and I, we're the only ones that are different here now from that time. But my main thing is efficiency at the district attorney. If this gets passed or doesn't get passed, I'm okay either way. We still have a district attorney's office irregardless of whether this court wants to pass this resolution or not. And as Commissioner Udanda mentioned, it's a resolution, so it translates into a letter of support essentially. It's not the law. Only Austin will make the law if this goes into play or not. My main concern, like I said, is, is the efficiency of the district attorney's office. And that's, I'm going to voice that concern all the way through and I have voiced it with, with Mr., I've voiced my concern to Mr. Sedna and I've also voiced it to Sheriff Castaneda because there, there is a lack based on the reports that Ms. Madi has provided to us and not just this last one. It's been multiple times where she's come before our court and the numbers clearly indicate that there's not felonies, regular felonies in terms of non-OLS felonies being indicted here in Dimmitt County. And as Ms. Madi mentioned it the other day, the sheriff's office says that it's the district attorney's office, the district attorney's office says that it's the sheriff's office. We don't know who it is, but I just want to make sure that these cases are being efficiently and effectively prosecuted because our constituents are the ones that come to my office, that come to Ms. Madi's office, that make possibly, some of them talk to you guys in regards to not being prosecuted. And so like Commissioner Udanda said, there's pros and cons about this, but if this is going to be a pro to make Dimmitt County have more efficiency with cases by having our own district attorney, then why not be for it? If it's going to mean that our constituents are going to have some kind of justice when it comes to their cases? Because just like Commissioner Udanda said, if my house got broken into or my grandmother's house got broken into, I don't want the case to be sitting there for a year, two years because Maverick is a bigger county than us and the focus is in Maverick County and not Dimmitt County.
Judge Mina?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Ponce.
I just want to voice that I get the same complaints also that the felony cases are not being prosecuted. What I've told some of our constituents is, let me find out the date when the district attorney is going to be here in Dimmitt County. Now, I want you to come up to the courtroom, wait for them and try to talk them back, especially in the sexual assault cases and the serious felony cases. Because the problem I see when these cases aren't being indicted is that it creates a problem for law enforcement in Dimmitt County. I'm having to constantly tell families, do not take the law into your own hands.
Exactly.
And if you do, if it's a misdemeanor, I will prosecute you. The other thing is, is that it's also a liability in Dimmitt County. Just think about how many lawsuits we've had with inmates in our county.
I was about to say that, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez and I were on a Zoom mediation a couple weeks ago because we're getting sued for a felony case.
It was a misdemeanor case.
Or a misdemeanor case, but possibility, there's possibilities there of felony in it as well. And Mr. Gonzalez is right, in the past, there's have been other cases where we've been sued and we have no answer from the district attorney's office as to whether those people are going to get prosecuted or not. And he's right, Mr. Gonzalez is right, it becomes a liability to us because nothing is being done. And that's my only concern. And like I said, you're, there is many, there's pros and cons about.
And this is not a problem that was created by Operation All-Star Cases. This is a problem that's been going on for years. Even when Judge Francisco Ponce was the county judge, we still have eight, nine, 10, 11 indictments every time they had grand jury. It's not something that was created by Operation All-Star. Anyone say that, that's insane.
I agree.
You have a third option here. You can table this and have Ms. Vela do a feasibility study for Dimmitt and Solana, since it's the other for Solana, and then bring this back. I talked to Mr. Morales, yeah, until May the 15th, the last day of him receiving this resolution, because the bill has to get out of the House and go into Senate. This is a text message I received from him because I specifically asked that question. And so if you have time, maybe a week or two, to get more information, where are we going to, how, how much, is housing going to cost us? How much is staff going to cost us? And?
Well, the reason why Mr. Gonzalez, I'm reading your text, it says the deadline for bills to pass the House and be sent to Senate side is May 15th. So that's not necessarily the same as this letter, this letter that we got from the chairman, Leach, it specifically requested that in order for new courts to be included in the ominous bill, please provide work and announce this report and Commissioners' Court resolution to my office by April the 4th. And so that's why I set this meeting up because Mr. Morales had advised me that he needed? needed the resolution by Friday the fourth. And May fifteenth is a different date, but regardless of whatever the decision is made, I just think that there has to be some conversation and there has to be...
That's exactly right. We need more discussion on this issue. And whether or not we're gonna call it, how are we gonna house the District Attorney? We also have another issue coming up. In speaking to Judge Codis, she wants public defender's office to make that, where are we gonna house the public defender's office in the future? So, there are additional issues that have come up. And I understand the need for public defender's office, because we don't have attorneys taking quarter point cases. You know, young attorneys come out of law school in the past, they got their feet wet on quarter point cases, then they're gonna take them out. And I think, once it comes to that, we all had to take quarter point cases when we first came out of law school. Now, you know, they're going into PI, line of field, or they're going into a person of government, they can't, yeah, assign, represent a defendant. But we don't have a lot of young attorneys coming back to Dimmitt County in that scenario. Not only in Dimmitt County, it's about to get out of the state, I've seen the reports of Mr. Short.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Yes, Commissioner.
Some of the statements that Mr. Gonzalez made, I was gonna make them also, about the housing of the DA and the staff, but the concern, the concern I have also, you know, of course, we're, like we said, we're pretty well set financially for Dimmitt County. You gotta look at it to the future, what's gonna happen. With, we're blessed that we have the oil, but what if it stops? That we were spending, and not carelessly, we're spending quite a bit of money throughout this budget. Some of our elected officials are concerned, but at the same token, what's not gonna put us in the same predicament that the sheriff and the District Attorney, and I don't, I'm sorry if I misquote Mr. Gonzalez, but put us in the same predicament that, well, no, it's the sheriff, no, it's the county attorney, no, it's the District Attorney. Now, is that something we're gonna invest in, having the same issue that I, Commissioner Lukavas made on the last Commissioners' Court meeting? Why don't we get them together and meet and see how we can improve this DA system? Because if the court decides to go either forward or against it, I don't, I don't know if I'll be here or not, but my statement's gonna be, what happened to working together? What happened to the report not being done right? And are we gonna have the same cases on the court system where we have nine and we're paying, and the county's paying the DA so much in Crystal City, but the cases are not being done? That's one of my concerns. And again, the housing, who's gonna wanna house where? That's gonna be another issue. And we gotta remember that we actually have a republic, but yeah, I see it as, if we're gonna spend something like this, I don't fight just to follow on my part, but the decision I make rests solely rest on me. But those are some of my concerns that I have. And are we gonna keep providing vehicles? Are we gonna have to provide fuel, travel, and all this contributes to an expense that we may be able to afford it, but we'll survive, we can handle it also? And I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Talamantes. What happens when, does it happen and who's gonna eat the burden of the pie?
Judge Mania? Go ahead. So, honestly, on my end, I understand what, and we all have the same concern, I was one whenever you voiced it with Ms. Gonzalez. You know, he said that we're gonna get the two entities together to have a discussion to see where we are with that. To me, it does feel a little bit like we're jumping a step and we're jumping ahead to sign this resolution. I understand where you're coming from, because yes, we do deserve to have answers to our cases. And speaking on that front, I will sit up here and I will do what I have to do to make sure that our constituents have the best outcome when it comes to some of these cases. So, I get where y'all guys are coming from, as far as saying as well, it's costing us to hold them in the jail, it's costing us, you know, it's costing us all around. My thing is still that it seems like an expensive, because if we're paying seventeen thousand five hundred a month to this office, what are we gonna have to pay? And that's my main focus point. What are we gonna have to pay and make sure that it offsets the cost and that it's beneficial for us? Because right now, we're dealing with this and as Mr. Gonzalez just said, this is not something just because of OLS cases, this has been something that's been happening for many, many years. This is based off of, and I don't wanna speak ill of the person, because I don't know him, I don't know his job description or what it is that he handles, so please don't take this out of context, but this is basing it on one individual's time in service in that area. And he retires, it can be somebody else and we can have a completely different outcome. You can get somebody that's younger and has more fire, is able to work diligently to be able to make sure that everybody's getting the service that they recommend. So, to me, it just feels like we're skipping a step when it comes to that, but I do know it might fall in death ears. I'm not naive to that. My whole thing is for me to support this and going back to that, because again, I understand where you're coming from, this is just a letter of support. Wholeheartedly understand that and I accept that. But what happens if we, as a Commissioners' Court, decide that we're gonna send our letter of support and then in 2029 comes up and then we can't split the bills of all or something's happening, we can't come to an agreement, they're gonna sit back and tell us, well, you supported it whenever we first, we first signed it? And I don't want that to hold us back. So, I wanna make sure that we realize how much is it gonna cost us? Because again, yes, the oil field is here and the boom is here and we're financially secure, but we don't know if that's gonna be the same situation when our children are older and, and if we're paying, I mean, to me, I don't know, I'm sorry, but seventeen thousand five hundred already seems like a steep amount.
I agree.
And I'm pretty sure that we're not paying for everything as far as like, again, we're gonna house them, I mean, we still have, we're still having issues housing our own county employees in the county right now.
And I believe it's, if I'm not mistaken, in 2023, Mr. Bena's not here, but if I'm not mistaken, we used to give the DA's office a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and it went up to two hundred and ten thousand dollars this last, this last budget. And so, like I said, whatever the court wants to do, either way, if we approve this resolution or we don't approve this resolution, you're a hundred percent, and I agree. Obviously, there has to be conversations to be had for us to find a solution to better service our constituents here in Dimmitt County. And in having a conversation with Mr. Sedna, he has advised me that he, this is his last term, that he's not gonna run again, is what he tells me. I don't know, that only time will tell, obviously, right? But it could be very well that somebody else could take the position and maybe clean house and have a way, different way of how they operate and there may be some more efficiency. I don't know. I mean, obviously, I don't know what the future holds, but you know, like I said, I talked to Mr. Morales, he advised me about this bill. I told him, you know, sure, I'll bring it to the table, my Commissioners may or may not before it. He had told me that they were in the past, so I said, oh, okay, well, then I'll put it in. And the reason why I said I'm for it and I will stand on it and I will be a person of my word that I will stand on it, the reason why I'm for it again is because of the efficiency. I believe that it would be more efficient. Obviously, there's a lot of things to consider. The biggest one is the cost and the financial feasibility of it. But I think it would be a good idea to have a financial feasibility exam done and what are the costs gonna be and how much it's gonna cost us? I know specifically for the District Attorney itself, the state would pay their salary, but we would have to incur the cost of the staff. And to answer, Commissioner, I wanted to answer, you know, we have to figure out, you know, if they need a vehicle, because currently, the way it sits, Mr. Sedna's office, his investigators do have a vehicle and he has secretaries in the overhead, so we wouldn't pay specifically the salary of that District Attorney, because it would be from the state. We could give them supplements if we wanted to, but our cost would be incurred in the sense of giving them the money for office, for the staff, vehicles and stuff like that. But those are things that obviously need to be looked at in terms of the financial feasibility. I know we have SB 22 that would assist as well, and I don't know how long OLS would be there or not, but I think it'd be good to have a financial feasibility test to be done. My main concern, and that was a concern that I discussed with Mr. Sedna, I discussed with the sheriff, with Mr. Morales, was that we need solutions now, we need something now in terms of the cases and how they're being done.
But we're still gonna have to wait till 2029, so even if we decide now, it's still gonna have to wait till 2029, right?
That is, my distinct understanding is that Mr. Morales is trying to change the language on that bill to reflect that it takes into effect January first of 2029, to allow Mr. Sedna the opportunity to finish out his term and whoever would take the position would be in 2029. So, there would be room there. You know, like Commissioner Urenda said, at the end of the day, obviously, Austin controls if they approve it or not. The last time that it was before the bill, it didn't go through, but those are just things that need to be taken into consideration. Yes, Mr. Gonzalez?
Here's another question that probably no one has thought of, is that the assets currently held by the District Attorney, our District Attorney has always said, and only the District Attorney...
The two ninety-third.
Those assets, including vehicles, furniture, anything else, come to Dimmitt County's public company?
Yes.
So, we need to find that out as well, because if we're headed to start from scratch and they're keeping all the vehicles and the furniture and everything else, but we're split in the district, well, that's not fair to Dimmitt County either.
And you're right, Mr. Gonzalez, as a practicing attorney and with Mr. Sedna, Mr. Sedna has always said that he's the DA only for the two ninety-third.
It's given to us, give us everything. The other thing, one positive thing that this could have is more accountability by the District Attorney to our citizens. And I'm speaking from experience, because as a misdemeanor prosecutor, if I get the constituent comes in and says, well, why didn't you prosecute my case? I said, sit down, let me pull the file and I'll tell you why. You know, and I don't think we have that in Dimmitt and Savala with our District Attorney, because he's illegal pass, they don't wanna drive all the way out there. And then when they do, they're talking to investigators, they're not talking to the prosecutor. It's what I'm being told. But I don't have a problem telling a constituent why their case wasn't prosecuted, where the defects were in the case provided to me by the county, the sheriff, the county sheriff or the DPS or the Texas Ranger. You know, I've got a letter in my shelf there, and they said, well, why can't you just call the Texas Rangers? I said, leave the sheriff, they won't help me, I can't, the question investigation's gotta come from the DA. I said, go talk to your DA. So, my door is always open when they wanna say, well, why didn't you do it? I have no problem telling them why. You know, even the officers, I told them it's open again. A lot of them take pride in their cases, but they don't wanna find out why I'm not accepting their cases, I'm on, I'm on down, doors open, I have no problem telling them and hasn't gotten any better.
Yes, sir.
Do I have one more thing I'd like to add? Kind of on the focus part, like I said earlier, I think it'd be beneficial, this was to go through, first and foremost. You know, we're sitting here, basically having a discussion on something that only often has this final decision on, but one of the things I do wanna say is, I know we talked about money, how much it's gonna cost Dimmitt County, how much it's gonna cost a lot of county, and the focus on this seems to be more on what's it gonna cost us? And to be honest with you, I for one, I feel as Commissioner and Commissioners' Court, our priority is to do whatever and anything we can to invest in the security of our community. And if it took me to say, if I have to cut back on my budget and we are just our county budget to assure that the investment is in the security and the protection of our community, I think that's one thing that I'd be for a hundred percent. Because it wouldn't do us any good as a community of the town to have parks, to have splash paths, to have golf course, to have anything, if we cannot secure the community for...
Your safety.
With the way, the way things are going, it's getting worse. And honestly, I feel like it's primarily, it's our responsibility as Commissioners' Court to take the proper action to better this system, to better these numbers and to provide as much security and protection any way we can. That should be our priority for our community.
One more question, Judge. Commissioner Urenda, I guess I misunderstood, but if Dimmitt and Savala don't pass this, does it still go into the floor?
Yes. So, pretty much, Commissioner...
So, why are they asking us to pass a resolution if they're not gonna fund the rest of the...
So, pretty much...
It's very easy as, it's very easy for them to pass bills out there, not knowing, this gentleman never made a phone call to me, and I'm gonna say, he's not our representative. I would expect more of a call from our representatives that are representing our district to come and tell me about this bill than having Mr. Morales, who doesn't represent Dimmitt or Savala or Maverick, come and place a bill that's gonna take action without them knowing what their financial situation is.
Well, I think that Mr. Morales is doing, putting it to represent his community, which is Maverick County, that's why he's doing it.
But he was a courtesy, as Roland Gutierrez or the other one would call and ask us for information. I understand that he's from Iguac, again, what in my part is, what gives him the right to say, I'm gonna support this, put this resolution on there, because Dimmitt County can afford it, it's Savala County, that's what I take. So, if it needs a letter to me, and I don't know, but I would send them a letter how I feel. And in regards, being that he's not my rep, where's my representative supposed to be representing us? This doesn't work. To me, this doesn't work. So, it's easy for me to tell Commissioner Urenda, you got property, you can afford all this, not knowing what your financial situation is, and you've just bought a new tractor, or you got more money than I, how can you buy that? It's costing me more. So, what gives the right of this representative to put this bill on the floor, when it's not our actual representative being concerned with this bill? And that's how I feel, because if we would have had the courtesy of also letting us know, then... But that's just my opinion.
So, my question was that, and how, again, I don't wanna make it sound like I don't care about the safety of Dimmitt County or Zalana County or any county for that matter. Because yes, when we're looking at it as a safety concern, yes, I get where you're coming from, from that. It still just feels, so my question is, I'm not gonna go spend money that I don't know that we're gonna get in return in the long run. You can tell me that it's gonna cost us three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, but we're gonna have somebody here all the time and we're gonna have, we're gonna be able to see the money at work. What I want to make sure is, if we do do this and we do support it, and again, I'm still not saying that I am, because my main concern is, if we sign this letter, and obviously, there's a lot of little things that need to be revised on it. For example, it says here that the Apple Take affects September first, 2025, and you're saying 2029, so there's a lot, there's a lot of language that I'm assuming that they're working on fixing already.
And I think, like I mentioned earlier, that email that Mr. Gonzalez forwarded to us, I think that there was another email under that from Mr. Morales's Chief of Staff saying that they're trying to fix the language to reflect that it takes effect January first, 2029.
And honestly, the only thing is, like, if we sign this, like I'm telling you, later on, we end up complaining, but we say, we don't have enough money, we're not able to keep this afloat, Zalana isn't able to keep up, if Zalana has a bigger population than we do, are y'all guys gonna supplement them more? I don't want them to come back and throw this letter of support in our face to say, well, you know, you supported it, you should have asked all these questions before. So, on the safety concern, I am with y'all guys a hundred percent, Commissioner Urenda and Judge Codis on that front. I mean, I have kids as well that are growing up in this community, so from a safety point of view, yes, I agree with y'all. My question was, was that on the date? And then also, are they gonna come report to us the same way that Ms. Mari does? Are we gonna have control over that office?
I mean, technically, we have control. I mean, technically, we have control to some extent of that office already, because we give them money.
But it doesn't really go very far right now?
Well, because we've never, at least, I don't know, and the other Commissioners can speak for me, because I've only been here for two years. But I don't think, aside from budget time, the district attorney has never had to come before Commissioners Court.
And that's what I'm asking.
To make a report, if I'm not mistaken.
Because if we're funding, if we're funding, then it's coming.
We've been funding them since the inception of the DA's office and before, it was even more probably, right, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Since forever.
We've cut his budget several times.
Aside from, he said that they've cut his budget several times, which I know that they have. But aside from cutting his budget, he's never had to report to us in terms of numbers. All the numbers that we get in regards to his office come from Mrs. Mari, because she's a district clerk, and those are district cases.
I'm just saying, because, and I'm asking that question because it would put me at ease. Because the same way that we fund the JP's office, we fund all these offices, and everybody has to come with their report to Commissioners Court once a month because the county, the taxpayers are paying for these departments. And your guys are obligated to come to court to give the report. That would put me a little bit at ease to say, okay, that I would support it, because then I'm gonna have somebody in front of me for the next four years that's gonna have to answer the question that we may or may not fall behind. Because again, we're still talking about historically speaking, one individual running this office. We don't know what it's gonna be like for somebody else to take it.
I don't think legally they're obligated to come make reports, anybody. It's a requirement and policy of Dimmitt County. But the way that it works is if they don't come and make reports, if they don't give up to dates, that's where the budget comes into play, is the way that I understood it. Because we're not getting any answers, so you get affected, they get affected by the budget, by the budget. But you know, I mean, I understand what you're saying. And going back to what Mr. Gonzalez said, one of the good things about, or positive things about if we were to have our own district attorney is that accountability, like he says, because they're here. They're here for Zavala. So the constituents would have to either drive 10 miles or not to get answers. Like people that come to Mr. Gonzalez, hey, what's the status on my case? He has an open door policy, he can talk to them. Whereas when you're in Eagle Pass, if you're a constituent of Dimmitt or Zavala, you'd have to probably drive over there to find out the status of your case, which makes it a little bit harder. And obviously, you know, the startup costs are gonna be like anywhere else. The cost, right, to start a business? And but at the end of the day, obviously, the goal is to keep the budget the same and to keep the budget within the parameters of what Dimmitt County can afford. And I think at the end of the day, if it were to pass, because obviously, again, this is a letter of support. If we agree to vote on this letter of support, or we don't agree, if Austin decides to do it, we're only obligated to work within the parameters of our budget. And if long-term, the oil field boom declines immensely, and I don't know, Commissioner Odena might have more insight than I do in regards to what the future looks like for the oil field. But if it declines drastically and it affects our budget, then all of us, not just the district attorney's office, all of us will have to work within the parameters of what the budget has. So if our budget drops because of the oil boom, then we as Commissioners Court and the electeds and department heads, we're gonna have to make adjustments to roll with it, you know what I mean? We're gonna have to accommodate and kind of go with whatever the budget is at the time, because if we lose money because of the oil field. So I think regardless, there's gonna be startup costs, no matter what, to start this office. To maintain it is where, you know, we have to question it and how we can maintain it and maintain it within the parameters of what we have in our pockets. It's kind of like the old adage says, you know, living outside of your means. Like if I only have 100 bucks for the week, I have to do what I gotta do to just make it work with 100 bucks for the week. So I think that's kind of how we should look at it in terms of long-term for this office. But you never know. I mean, Austin might very well say, we're not gonna approve it. It's good to have this conversation, but we could be having this conversation in vain because nothing can happen and it stays the same.
And speaking on that as well, as like how you're saying it, and I guess that's probably the best term to put it, so that way to get my point across, you don't go start a business without a business plan. You're not gonna go, you're not gonna go find investors and they're gonna say, oh, I'm gonna give you 100,000 and just on your word. You need a business plan for you to be successful. And that is what I'm looking for on that sense. So just thinking back on off of you, that is my point. We don't have a business plan, and I don't want for somebody to come and tell me that I supported something and I'm having kinks in the business. Because again, can we make it beneficial? Can we maintain it? Probably. And I know you said, you know, asking Commissioner Odena. The oil field is a roller coaster. It's gonna continue to go up and down, up and down. And y'all guys know that with the oil field boom coming up and down, up and down, taxes, people spending money here in this area and everything like that, that's also gonna affect on the taxes that we're receiving at the end of the year. So it's gonna continue to roller coaster. It's gonna continue to go up and down. But my main thing is what you just said. We don't start a business plan without a business, without having a business plan. And on that note, I would like, I don't know if you can step out to double check, to see what date it is. I do know that we need 24-hour notice before we have an emergency meeting. I would like to find for sure the date it is, that is the deadline. Because I feel like together as a court, we need to do more research.
I just have that deadline of the 4th is what.
This wouldn't fall as an emergency meeting.
Yeah, it would not fall as an emergency meeting though.
Okay.
It would just, we could do it as a special or regular meeting, but.
I just think it'd be more homework.
No, no, I.
Well, you need to do it before that, more time to get the bill. And just one other deal that goes along with accountability is security for the prosecutors. I can't stress that enough. They tried a murder case that year not too long ago.
Yes.
And the defendant was acquitted. Our prosecutors were threatened after the trial. And that's not right either. You know, they're trying to do their jobs and do the best for our community. But at the same time, you know, we have to have our prosecutors escorted by the Sheriff Department because the defendant who was acquitted's family or friends on the family are now threatening the prosecutors. So there was a bad case prosecuted and calling them all sorts of names. And there was almost discards in the courtroom.
I'm sorry to hear that. I really am. But I, with all due respect, I know that there is a lot more that goes into this. And I think that together as a court, we need to do our homework and make sure that we're financially sound to do this. I'm not saying that I'm against it. I'm just thinking that I feel like.
We just want more quick answers to your questions.
I need a business plan. How much is it gonna cost us? Where are we gonna house them? What, you know, startup is obviously gonna be more than maintaining it. I know that you're saying that if the budget goes down, then we can adjust it due to the budget. And that's a little bit comforting to me to know that as well, is that if the budget does adjust, then that department would adjust with us as well. But I do think that having a business plan in place and knowing how much it's gonna cost us, because I don't want to approve something and then wait four years. And four years, it might not be me, it might be somebody else. And then they're sitting here having to figure out the answers to my questions when I feel like we have enough time to get the answers before we say yes or we say no.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate it.
Judge, I just want to make this clear that we're all here for the safety of our community and our kids. Also, on this bill, which has already been sent to the House.
Yes, ma'am.
It's already been sent. So it's sent, it was sent with the act that takes effect September 1st, 2025.
Yes, ma'am.
That's how it took effect. That's how it's been sent to the House though, to the House. But I know that they said they're gonna try and clarify some details on it and put it for the terms of the 293rd court when it ends the term, which will be in 2029. But right now, as it sits at the House, it sits at September.
It's September 1st.
September 1st of 2025 this year.
Yes. So just to clarify that, Commissioner Odena, the way that Mr. Morales advised me is on May 15th is whenever they actually vote on the bill. So then the bill goes to the House floor, to the Senate, excuse me. And then it'll get approved. And that's why from here to, before May 15th, Mr. Morales is trying to change that language. But yes, you are correct. As it stands now, the way that it was filed, it takes effect September 1st, 2025. But from here to May 15th is from, my understanding is that he's trying to change the language to reflect, excuse me, take effect January 1st, 2029. Before they even vote on it, because it has to be voted in the House first. If it doesn't even get passed in the House, it won't even go over to the Senate. And so it has to be voted on in the House first, within the House of Representatives, on May 15th.
My other concern is, I feel that we're being rushed into this. We were never, I was never aware of anything that was going on. I was not aware of this House bill. Never reached out to us, like Commissioner Godwin said. I feel like they're wanting to approve this resolution so they can move forward. Either way, they're gonna, the bill is already out of the House. But they're, like, they're wanting this resolution passed so they can get a little piggyback of us and say, okay, Dimmitt County wants it. They already signed the resolution. They're for it. So, okay, just move forward, without even knowing what it's gonna cost us. Because nobody has reached out and said, how much is it gonna cost us?
As of last Friday, when I spoke to Mr. Morales, Maverick County had submitted their resolution of support, and Zavala County had submitted their agenda. And we're in the process of doing that. The other thing, Commissioner, to answer your question, that may be a draft of the bill, but it goes to the committee here and makes amendments to the.
To the bill.
To the bill until they reach a final draft at the end of September voting on the House, then it goes to the Senate.
Yes, sir.
It's like that whole commercial, how a bill becomes a law.
Right. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Come on, then, go ahead, Commissioner.
Say, Dimmitt County doesn't go with it, but Zavala does, or vice versa, what happens then?
At the end of the day, Commissioner, regardless of whether Zavala goes for it, or Dimmitt goes for it, or none of us go for it, it's up to Austin. If Austin says, we're gonna pass it, and it passes at the House, and then they go to the Senate, and then the Senate passes it, then we're obligated to follow, because it becomes a law, essentially. You understand what I'm saying? Yeah, so.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Because y'all guys are saying that, and I do, I get that as well, that this is up to Austin. It's not really even up to us. It's just a letter of support. Can we get an updated of the bill before we sign it? Where the date is corrected? And I know that Mr. Ponce also had some issues saying that the language wasn't as clear as whether the Mavericks, Zavala, and Dimmitt, to make some of those changes.
It is, it is clear. It's very clear on there that it says that the 293rd would be, if you read right here, it says the 293rd would be on the actual bill. Yeah, let me tell you. It says, I think, the way Mr. Ponce was transversed was that the district attorney of the 365th also represents the state in all matters and civil matters that arise in the 293rd in Maverick County. That's line number 24. It's not the one for Dimmitt and Zavala. And so I can most definitely reach out to Mr. Morales to see if he can give us, after like Mr. Gonzalez said, once they go in there and amend, and they have continued their discussion over there, if we can get the final bill as how it's gonna be put before the court, before the, excuse me, before the floor, May 15th. I can try to get him to get that. I think you can also go online by the name, Mr. Gonzalez. You can go online?
I said you can follow it online, but May 15th is when it goes to the Senate. It's gotta pass the House first.
Correct.
The final version goes to the House floor and voted on.
Exactly.
And then that's the one you need to send the resolution to. That's the one that goes to the Senate. The Senate can shoot it down.
Yeah.
Not approved, it's an omission.
Yeah. If you go online, the way he told me was if you go online to.
Just take the bill number.
Bill number right here, 465. And then you can follow it. You can follow it. Yeah, you should be able to do that. Yes, Mr. Odena, Commissioner.
One other thing, before I correct this, is one other thing that I'm prepared to do. I'm gonna reach out to our state rep, Mr. McLaughlin, and just voice out my concerns, because he's really the one that's out there to speak for us. Unless we literally drive down there and get in front of him, but he would be the one. All this was placed together by Representative Morales on behalf of who he represents, which is Maverick County.
Yes.
So at this point, it's our, to do our diligence, my step would be to reach out to him and just let him know the situation and what I would appreciate for him to focus on that would benefit our community, our county, and Zavala as well. So that's just one, just something to put out there, you know, that probably one thing to take into consideration.
I think that'd be a really good idea.
When y'all do that, ask them about the funding. Is there any additional funding or this non-funded mandate? We're gonna be responsible 100% other than the DA salary.
The DA's salary, yeah.
This is an unfunded bill.
Yes.
Yes, it's an, it'll fund the DA position, Commissioner Odena, but it won't fund anything else.
I don't know if I'm making it clear, but it's an unfunded bill.
Yes, Mr. Morales would be able to get share of the board prosecutor's grant that helps fund the office. There's other grants that the DA is currently receiving also, Operation Lone Star and so forth, that the new DA would have to apply for to help pay for some of the positions if the office is created.
Correct.
There's other grants out there that could help with the funding, but we're not aware of that. And we'd have to wait for the new grant season to come in to apply to those funds.
I think that would be a really good idea as well, Judge.
Thank you.
To get with Mr. McLaughlin, because, I mean, as y'all guys are saying, Mr. Morales is in our state rep, and it could mean that there's holes in there and that's benefiting them and not us. And so we gotta kind of take care of us and make sure that we're good.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Odena to table. And I have a second by Commissioner Talamakis. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Aye. We have two oppositions, Commissioner Odena and Judge Ponce. And then we have motion to table.
May I ask, why you all?
Me? Yeah. So personally, I'm opposing the table because I honestly strongly believe that this is something that regardless of what it's gonna cost, yeah, we can sit here, but you know, like Commissioner Talamakis was saying, you don't start a business without a plan. You also don't stay in business if you're not getting a return. That's the way I look at it. We're spending a lot of money as a community, as two counties, three counties already. And if in any shape or form, if anything, this would bring more focus to our smaller two counties than what we're getting right now. The fact that everything's in Eagle Pass right now, the concentration's in Eagle Pass, I feel that that in itself is keeping our numbers low. And I don't feel we're getting a return for what we're already investing. And like I said earlier, whatever we need to do, whatever I personally need to do as a commissioner, if I have to cut back on my budget, so do I. But I need to see, I need to take any type of action. And if it needs to be now, I'll do it now. I stand alone, I'm just one vote. But I owe it to our constituents that we look to what's, and I understand, like I said, it probably costs. But at the end of the day, the decision's actually in Austin. But from where I stand, my standpoint, looking at numbers, looking at the established pattern, something needs to change drastically, and I think this is the drastic change.
Thank you. Yes. And I just feel like on that note, I think I have faith in my judge that she can find out a better deal for us to make sure that we're taking care of our own.
Thank you. And to answer your question, Commissioner Odena, the reason why I'm opposed to tabling this is because I think that we need to submit a resolution either for or against it and not necessarily just table it, so that we could give it to them. And then Austin can decide whatever it is that they want to decide. And I agree that we do need a district attorney's office in Dimmitt County, because I think as a past prosecutor working at that office, and I know Ms. Mari can probably stand by me when I say is that we didn't get left behind. And it's very sad, because this has been going on for years. And I really don't foresee any changes. And I will stand on it, and I will say it to Mr. Shenna in front of him. when you have people inside his office contacting me that they're being directed to only do all of those cases and nothing else, that's a great concern to me. And we can have all the discussion to try to find a resolution to get him to get with the Sheriff's Office, like Ms. Madi recommended, and that we have a meeting of minds in the middle. Um, at the end of the day, I still don't think it's gonna change. Um, and I think the numbers are still gonna be the same numbers that they're gonna be, um, regardless of whether we have that meeting or not. Um, in the past, um, my distinct understanding was Mr. Sena's office, the budget got cut. Mr. Ponce just stated that right now, that in the past, they've cut his budget, and the numbers still didn't change. Mr. Gonzalez agreed to that as well. The numbers still did not change. So, I, I, I don't know why, but I, I think that um, there has to be something to be done, and um, the, the only reason why I'm opposing for it to be tabled is because I would like to have some action done today, whether we approve it or not. If, if they, if y'all had opposed to not approve it, that's okay too, um, but I just don't think that we should have tabled it. Commissioner Uranda, that's my answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so we do, uh, the motion does carry, um, for it to be tabled, Ms. McDaniels.
So we will have it in front of us again, on the date?
I will call Mr. Morales's office. As a matter of fact, what I can do is I'll email him and CC all of you guys.
Appreciate it.
Um, because my distinct understanding from what his office contacted my office was that they needed it by this Friday. So that's why I put the, because honestly, I was gonna put it for the agenda for next week, but because his office said they needed it by this Friday, that's why I had the meeting today. Um, I know that this text message says that the deadline for the bills to pass is May 15. That's a totally different date than what this is, and that's why I attached this letter from the committee chair. But I will email him and tell him to clarify as to when they needed this resolution. And if he says the 4th, then obviously it's too late by then.
And that's why I had asked you right now, Judge, was there any way, because again, I'm not gonna sit here and I'm not gonna play politics on this topic. I know that it's an important topic. But what I wanted to know is if you could step out and make that call to make sure to verify, because if we did need an answer by today, then you can continue the conversation, and I'll rescind my table motion. But I wanna know for sure the date that we have, because again, like I just stated, I think that if you had more time, you could make sure that we're better protected um, on our end as well, because as you're saying, Morales isn't even our state rep, and it could be something that on their end is just benefiting them, them and not us, because you're just saying that that office constantly, we get left behind. So to me, thinking what you're telling me is that they may think that we don't have the time or to fight back on it or to put our own input on it. And I think that this is gonna be a decision that's gonna financially impact Demet County. We should be able to have input on what the bill reads and what it says. So I do have faith in you that you can do it if you have more time, but if you don't, I would love clarification on when is the deadline.
I mean, I can, what I can do is I can have Ms. Hernandez go call Mr. Morales's office right now, if you wanna answer right now, and he can tell us if they need it the 4th or they need it anytime before May 15.
I mean, yes.
You wanna go ahead and call Mr. Morales? Do you have Ramondo's number, Mirta? Okay.
Yes, I just wanna be sure, because again, like Commissioner Uranda said, it does feel like we're being rushed into it. It is, the bill is a bill that they're not gonna pick up on their end, and how Mr. Gonzalez just said, it could be something that they keep all the, the equipment over there, and we're the one that's putting on it. I just feel like there's too many questions on the floor, but I don't wanna leave here thinking that I didn't vote or I voted to table it for any other reason than I have an actual standpoint, that I want clear, how much is it gonna cost us? What are we looking at? Um, and to make sure that you have time to, to put any input that you feel that will benefit Demet County as well.
Okay. So I'm gonna, that, that motion was voted on, but I'm going to uh, recall it. You guys want me to pause so Mirta can make the phone call? What I'll do is I'll recall it right now. I'm gonna go to 2.2. Uh, 2.2, discussion appropriate action, approval to allow FFA 4-H organizations to host 5K run at golf course from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., established rate of $40 for the event. Um, just really quick, Commissioner Nanda, Ms. Alyssa, and it might have been just a typo or a, a miss, um, a mishap on the, on the way that it was, um, the
Presented?
Yeah, the agenda item, the way you wrote it.
I wrote it.
Yes, because um, Ms. Ms. Alyssa emailed my office saying that the 4-H organization was not hosting and that it was FFA, and I said, okay. So I don't know if Mirta reached out to you or not about that, but
She did, and I was actually gonna open the, the request with the clarification that this is for the FFA organization and not the 4-H. I misunderstood when the request came through. Um, so I was gonna clarify, but um, for the record, it's just for the FFA organization. And this is a 5K event they're requesting to have. Um, the reason they're requesting to, they're asking they can have at the golf course is due to the fact that there's continued construction going on, and the fences are close up to the end. That was usually the 5K pattern that they established and use. Um, and, and my personal opinion, I feel like it's something doable. It's for a youth organization of our community, a very strong organization, if I may add, and it would keep them safe. Uh, I've always said that that golf course should have more
Like a walking trail and stuff, right?
It's a very nice trail. I don't know, any of the missions I've ever been behind, the faculty, and I personally have never been back there until I started to walk with a butt. However, I think that golf course should suit, suit more purposes than just for people to play golf. If, if, but we've had some youth teams that are using it, using the front part of it right now, uh, and the idiots to practice their tee ball and, and
Commission, is it 40 or the $50 that we usually do?
There's no established, for that particular event, there's no established fee, because uh, it's just a, it's, it's only from 8 to 12, basically. Uh, they get together under the sunning, and then they do their 5K, and then after that, the golf course opens up. So there's really, we don't have an established rate. Uh, $50 is usually what was charged to use the conference room, which is a, a pretty small conference room. They were not using the conference room, just the, the awning outside, the padding. So that's why I just put under $40 if anybody would, uh, request anything different than that, I'm all for it.
Okay. The date, Commissioner Uranda, it wasn't on there?
Were you forgetting, Commissioner?
Yes.
Motion to approve on Uranda.
He's gonna get a date, so she can put it on the minutes.
Just ignore the rate of 20?
Whatever you want.
Okay.
It's $20?
Yeah, because they're not gonna use inside the facility or anything like that on the date?
No, if anything, they'll probably buy drinks or things and stuff like that. The date is April 12.
So I'm going to, um, Commissioner Talamartes, will your motion be to approve to allow the FFA organization to host a 5K host a 5K run at the golf course on April the 12th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., at a rate of $20 for the event?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'm gonna reopen 2.1. Commissioner Uranda, you said you had an answer?
There, there is no set date.
There's no set date on the
On the resolution.
Okay.
The date is set, the sooner the better, but there's no date, no set date.
So then we can put it on the agenda for Monday?
I asked him, because we're thinking of putting it up on the execution schedule, he needs to get it.
Well, I don't know, well, Monday to get you the answers that you want, or what is it that you want?
Commissioner's court is not this Monday, the next Monday.
The 14th?
Because we don't have to turn our agenda items until this coming up, Tuesday.
And what is it that you want for the 14th agenda?
Um, the language
Well, because I'm gonna put the, I'm gonna put, essentially, it's gonna say the same thing to the, the, the resolution on the 14th.
Um, the, the language, the date, um, I know that you said that what Mr. Ponce had said, that it's not, um, confusing or misleading, um, but to make sure on your end, um, if you tell me that it's good, I will take your word for it.
Um, language, date, what else did you?
Of the equipment that we've already invested into, um, that office, are we gonna get that back?
The assets?
The assets. So there was the assets, the, that, and then what are we looking at for a startup cost? And how many employees? Because then we can kind of figure out from how many employees, what their salary and pay rates are giving.
I don't know if I can give you an answer for startup cost, or he can give you an answer, because I would, I mean, not startup cost, but just, I think to some extent, we can give startup cost, but in terms of, of staff, I don't know if I could give you that answer, because that would be contingent upon the person that gets the position, because currently, right now, like Mr. Sena, he has, I think, uh, it's Mr. Sena, Amanda, Ugo, Ruben, the new girl, and, um, and Ramses, they have six attorneys right now.
So they can, do you like
Currently, so that's
Fine, maybe, just to be on the same side on our end?
No, I think, I think, I think ideally speaking, if an office, if the, if the, um, what is it called? If the Congress, if, not Congress, the Senate over in, in Austin approves of it, I think at the minimum, it would be the District Attorney plus maybe one Assistant Prosecutor, because at that point, it would just be Demet and Sabala. So I would assume it would just be the District Attorney and an Assistant Prosecutor, if at that, maybe not. Uh, two Secretaries, one for each county, and two Investigators, one for each county. And that would be the extent of it. Um, obviously, Mr. Sena has six assistants, because they're covering Maverick, Demet, and Sabala. Uh, he has about eight investigators, and then he has about 10 staff members. Like, when I say staff, it's Secretaries. So I think at the minimum here, as a startup, it would be the District Attorney, an Assistant, possibly, two Secretaries and two Investigators. That's what I would, I would assume. I don't know, because whoever the person would be, would be the one to better address those answers, but
And then also as well, um, since we do have some time before this would take in effect, as the Chief Budget Officer of the county, um, trying to maybe if we can, um, have a budget plan to see, like, if we can save up for each year, to make sure that whenever 2029 does come, we hit the ground running, and we're established and the money's already where the money is, um, so looking at that as well.
No, I'll definitely, and I'll have to get with Mr. Pedra on that. I know, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, and that was something Mr. Gonzalez and I talked about last week, um, in addition to, um, the, obviously, um, the state would, excuse me? Um, in addition to, um, the state, uh, um, in addition to, um, the state, uh, yes, um, such, Ms. Hernandez, I guess whoever she talked to, Commissioner, um, said that they need the resolution by the 4th to speed up the process, however, Mr. Morales will take it anytime before the 14th.
I just spoke with his people, um, who she spoke to.
I don't know who you spoke to, Mirta, but
Ramondo?
Ramondo?
That's right.
She's
I just stopped in the way.
Well, he told Commissioner Uranda one thing, he told him another, but
He told me there was no deadline, just, just sooner the better. By following it, we can wait till the 4th, he said.
Okay.
Yeah, so he said?
Oh, whatever.
Yeah, well
So there was no, there was no deadline?
No, he, he advised Mirta, the chairman wants
He say deadline or not?
You can look for, for the chairman to speed up the process, that if there's a decision that you need or not, they do allow access to the 15th to take it to them.
Yes, to the 15th.
For the 15th.
To the 15th. Um, so, um, me too. Um, oh, going back to what, what Mr. Gonzalez had mentioned, um, when I talked to him last week, um, this position would create the District Attorney itself, which would be a state-funded position. The state would pay, the state would pay for the District Attorney. Um, however, the rest would be non-funded, which means that we would have to, us and Sabala would incur the cost. But as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned to me, and the sheriff also, Castaneda, had told me, was there is SB 2022, SB 22, which SB 22, um, we would be considered a county of more than 10,000, but less than 30,000, so we would qualify for a grant of $175,000 yearly. Um, there's a possibility.
You said 175,000?
175,000, yes. Um, and that $175,000 could be used, and that's a, that's a forever grant. That's from the controllers. That grant never gets taken away, so long as you apply and obviously follow the guidelines. Um, that's $175,000 based on our population with Sabala. Um, then of course, there's the OLS grant, um, which we don't know how long that'll last, but there's that grant as well. And then, um, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, that he talked to Mr. Morales, um, that if they would split, because currently, right now, Mr. Sena's office gets the BPU grant, and they get almost close to a million dollars, so that would be split, and be, some of it would be given to us. So there's the BPU grant as well. And then there's, um, the, uh, additional grant, um, for the TDCAA grant, um, that assists with, um, paying for a prosecutor. So there's those four grants, and then in addition, obviously, what we already give his office, which is a 210,000, plus in, in theory, if Sabala gives 210,000, that's 410,000, 20,000, excuse me, plus the grants.
And these grants, I know that you said that the 145,000
175,000.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 175,000, that's a yearly grant that's available. But the OLS, the BPU, and the TDCAA are those grants that we would be like in competition with?
No, those are yearly grants that, that you can get to, but the only caveat with those is that they might not necessarily be, um, indefinite grants forever. SB 22 is, because that's a law that got passed, um, so that one is a forever grant. When I say forever grant, I mean, it like, it doesn't go away, unless the state goes bankrupt, right? But OLS, BPU, TDCAA, those are contingent on what the legislation does every year and how much money they give. Because like, for instance, the BPU grant, historically speaking, it's gotten bigger and bigger and bigger throughout the years. But that doesn't mean that it can get lower. That's something that Austin would take. So those are just things to consider, but I can get you those specific numbers. Um, and I'll get with Mr. Pedra as well when you ask about the startup cost. I just can't tell you how many staff members they would have, because that would be a call.
The SB 22 is forever, but the dollars and amounts are different every time. The OLS is different. The dollar amounts are gonna be different depending what you ask for. You're not always gonna give it to us, but they're there.
Mm-hmm.
It depends what they award to each county.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Question, and I may be, maybe I'm not looking at this right way. If the, the District Attorney's Office was split up, um, the money that's allocated for this office to operate at this point, and we're roughly saying that Maverick County pays 65% of what they're required to offer, being the, I'm thinking, the way I'm looking at it, Maverick County's paying 65% of courses for most of the workload is that, and the population. And I may be losing focus on how this is put together, but if the new District Attorney's Office that's gonna take care of Sabala and Demet, don't have the workload or population in Maverick, they wouldn't end up with the same, so to speak, budget requirement to run their office, right?
Yes, that's what I was telling her, like
But what I'm saying is, neither would Maverick. Maverick wouldn't be required, uh, uh, I'm hoping they wouldn't be waiting for the same budget, uh, or the same amount, not the same, not that they'd be receiving from Sabala or Demet, but they wouldn't expect Maverick County to say, hey, this is our budget that we run with every year, and this is what y'all need to come up with, because now it's only Maverick. And, and is it, is that right, or is it, am I missing something?
You mean like for their Commissioner's Court? You mean their Commissioner's?
Yeah, because
Their Commissioner's Court? Yeah.
We're proposing a decrease of workload on two offices.
No, I understand what you're saying. I don't know what
The state.
I don't know what their Commissioner's Court would do. The District Attorney's salary, Mr. Uranda, that's paid to, by the state, that's set by the state. So Mr. Sena gets paid the same as the DA in Brazos County, and whatever, they all get paid the
So the expenditure comes from his office, comes from the office itself, the building, brick and mortar, to speak. The personnel that he has to The personnel that he has to carry as a team to provide the services, vehicles, office, everything.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. If, we're basically cutting it in more than half for Savala and Dimon. I don't understand why we would not be able to afford it if we're giving, we're giving away the majority of the work to Maverick County. So their focus should be Savala and Dimon for the, if in fact you're supposed to. So we're going to, obviously, we wouldn't need as many attorneys and many investigators.
That's what we think, but it's up to them what they say. Because he can come and, he can come and say, okay, this is what I need.
Yeah, but he can think by the state, we secure a budget, his budget.
So we don't pay him at all?
They can ask for whatever they want. But knowing the facts, if we say, hey, you're down from four attorneys to two attorneys, for example, you need to readjust your budget. Your request is it, but we don't feel that you need this much. But that's up to us.
Yeah, it's budget time.
And another thing is, if we, for example, as a county, were to offer them, that's a little more that we could, if we're going to split it between Savala and Dimon, Dimon should be taking on less of the cost because we're going to offer them. So that's another cost that we're going to move. There's so many things that we have, I feel we have an advantage because of our position financially and structurally, that I really don't see where, like I said, maybe I'm missing something, where we might not be able to afford it.
And I'm just saying, and that's why I'm having, exactly what you're saying, everything that you're saying, like if we're going to house them, then we should be able to have like a cost reduction because we're going to be, you know, housing them in one of our county things. But all these little things is what I was talking about, like we need to figure out the percentage before we say, yes, we're not going to do it or we are going to do it. Do I think that Dimon County can afford it? Yes. But in the same token, Judge, like that's why I was saying, Maverick County wants this. And when somebody wants something, make sure that we're getting something in return. And that's why I'm saying that I have a little bit, not a little bit, I have faith in you that you can make sure that Dimon County comes out on top. Because at the end of the day, we're doing something that's benefiting them as well. Because to me, it sounds like we're unwanted in that department, you know? So...
Well, now, that was a question I had asked Mr. Morales when I saw him there at the Capitol on the 25th, because he had brought to my attention that, that Bonsa had put it, or they had put it as a resolution back in 2021. And I had asked him at that time, what happened, like what happened that it didn't pass? Or what happened that, like why was it put on there? And at that time, he had told me that his constituents in Maverick County or his electeds or whatever had posed to him, like they wanted to separate. And they looked at the numbers and they felt that at that time, it was most beneficial for everybody to split. However, it didn't pass and he spoke to me about that. And like I said, my stance was, I was all for it because of the fact that the cases have not been being prosecuted. That's what my position is. But obviously, you know, you do look at the cost. And I think going back to what Commissioner Hernandez was saying, and what you're saying as well, the position of the district attorney, that is paid by the state. But the overhead and the staff would be, as Commissioner Rukawa said, would be based on whoever this district attorney is and what their wants and their needs are. And again, where we come in as a court, regardless if I'm here or you're here, whoever's here, they come and say, I want 10 attorneys. Well, you know what? There's not a need for 10 attorneys. And that's where the commissioners' court comes in to do it when we do the budget, to approve based on the actual necessity and what is actually effective to efficiently prosecute those cases. And also, what is, in terms of the numbers, what is feasible, you know? And so I think that, I, my personal opinion, based on the numbers, based on what Mr. Gonzalez told me last week, based on what Mr. Morales told me, I think that the numbers are there that we could afford it. Of course, there has to be a discussion ad nauseam with Savala County because technically, by the number of the census, Savala's a bigger county than us. By, I think, 1,000 or something to that effect, they have 1,000 more people than we do as a county. But if you look at the numbers right now, Dimon and Savala give Mr. Serna the same amount of money. We both give him $210,000 to operate his office. So with that being said, if we were to give, if Savala were to just strictly stay how they are right now and give 210 to Dimon and Dimon gives 210, we're at 410,000. And if you look at just on that, on that base number, that's more than enough if we were to offer them at one of the offices here to be able to, for that district attorney's office to be able to operate. But that's the, you know, discussions to be had in terms of the budget. But because, I mean, Savala County also gets BPU funds and they also get OLS funds. So they could come in with their funds and put into the piece of the pie, if you understand what I'm saying. So they would also have those outsourced funds to be able to put in if we needed more.
I think putting that into perspective as well, a number amount that he gave you, the 400, helps a bit. But I, like I'm saying, I think we can do a little bit more homework.
I will, I would definitely get with Mr. Pereda when he gets here. And I'll give him these bullet points and also sit down...
And I don't think we leave until Tuesday, so we still have some time if you want to set another meeting for Monday, right?
You mean a special week?
Right, to do this again, if you want to get it done earlier.
If you guys want to, I mean, I could. I mean, I'll get with Mr. Pereda so that he can, see if he can give me his time so that we can get all these answers. And if I can get an answer for you before next week...
I would recommend on the regular meeting, so that we can get all the information we can.
It's up to you.
But it's up to you, the court, but I think that's also putting another rush. And then if we run into more questions, we're going to have to table again for the next meeting.
Well, I think based on what, what Mr., based on what Mr. Ramondo said to either Commissioner Rukawa or Ms. Hernandez, as long as they get it before the 15th, then obviously our next meeting won't be till May 14th. So that's like the day before.
The day before, that's what I'm saying. And honestly, and the reason why I'm saying this Monday is because I'm really sitting up here and I'm trying to do what's best for the county and all. So as I'm saying, coming to Commissioners' Court, we get for discussion. If you feel like it's enough time to do it by Monday, I would say bring it back on Monday.
Without, without your comment, it's up to the court on how... What I'll do, Commissioner Talamates, is that let me get with Mr. Pereda. I don't know if he's going to be in today or not. So if he's not, then I have to get with him tomorrow. And that's already Thursday. I will try my very best, if he's here today, to meet with him today. If not, I'll get with him tomorrow and see if he can answer me some of these. And if I can get a definitive answer by, before 10:00 a.m. on Friday, so that I can have Ms. Hernandez post. And I'll call you guys to see if you guys are available for a quorum for Monday. I'll put it for Monday at 10:00 a.m. for a special meeting for this particular resolution. Again, I can give you what I have. But if I don't have it by Friday before 10:00 a.m., then I will advise you and put it on the regular agenda on the 14th. And we can approve it or not approve it on the 14th. And if it gets approved, then I'll send it to Mr. Morales. If it doesn't, I'll advise him that it didn't get approved. And then he can do what he needs to do to put it over to the Senate or whatever he has to do when they're in Austin. I will entertain a motion to... What I'll do is actually, I can just recess and keep it open. I won't adjourn because that gives me the opportunity, if I don't have to... Well, that also gives me the opportunity that if we do have a meeting on Monday, I don't have to repost because we're in recess.
I think we have to wait for that one, no?
No? Okay.
Sure, yeah, right now we don't have a...
I know, it was not put on here. I'm going to orally put item number three to recess and adjourn. It wasn't on the agenda. Give me one second, Commissioner. I'm just putting it on here. Let the record reflect, Ms. McDaniel, that item number three is the recess and adjourn. And I have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Talamates. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.